...that was intended to help us gain some additional information from the public. The first two questions that we asked were actually...
Meeting, regular agenda, regular meeting, and I will, if you'll all please rise, I'm going to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, living, free, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for all being here. The next order of the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Wayne made the motion, John made the second to approve the consent agenda as it is.
And I'm, just as a clarification, I wanted to make sure that we've got the correct language for the farmers market policy within that consent agenda.
You didn't get the update on...
I did, it's right here. I just want to make sure that that's what is meant.
The new current packet, 1C, that's exactly what it was, Stephanie, that you handed out to us.
Thank you.
We're good to go, okay? We will start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, sixty zero on the consent agenda, so let's pass. Thank you, folks. We will move right on to our next order of business, which is public comment and mayor's response. Time, so we allot fifteen minutes for folks to come up and speak in front of us, as long as it's not on tonight's agenda, or something that's quasi judicial, or something coming up in front of Board of Adjustment, or P and Z. And when you come up, please state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes.
My name is Josh Kimrow, 111 North Washington, here in Moscow. Mayor, council members, citizens of Moscow, I am here today as a representative of the new addition to the community encompassed by the city of Moscow and the county of Latah. We are Palouse Area Care and Transport, also known as PACDMS. We are an EMS agency based in Moscow and licensed by the state of Idaho as an advanced life support pre-hospital, interfacility, and critical care transfer service. Our primary mission is to serve our community by providing interfacility transport for patients at Gritman Medical Center that require specialized or upper-tier care from other regional medical facilities, such as a neurologist in Lewiston, or a cardiologist in Coeur d'Alene. After hearing from the Director of House Supervisors at Gritman Medical Center that it would routinely take two to five hours to arrange for transport, and up to twelve hours before a staffed ambulance would arrive, we made the patients that were adversely affected by the situation our focus. Waiting twelve hours for transportation to arrive after a physician has made the decision to send you to a higher level of care is serious, and potentially life-threatening. We are proud to report that our response time can be measured in minutes, not hours. PACDMS has and will continue to put members of our community into the appropriate level of care hours ahead of what has historically been available. Our second, and potentially more important, objective is to provide paying jobs to the skilled emergency medical technicians and paramedics of our community. It is our hope that during current tough economic times, that these professionals will be able to remain local, supporting their community, as well as their families, with their ability to save lives. In closing, we would like to thank the citizens of Moscow and the members of this council for their continued support. We are proud to serve you.
Thank you. Okay, for others that would like to come up and speak.
David Pierce, 716 East F Street. Six years ago, at the first council meeting of the year, a noise, new noise ordinance was passed. Since that time, I have requested yearly information about the effects of that ordinance during the past year. My annual questions are and have been, one, how many complaints has the police department received in the past year? Two, how many noise citations has the police department issued during the past year? Three, how many noise citations cases have gone to court? Four, how many times has the judge fined the person or persons cited? What was the range of fines issued? And I believe this question has usually been answered in terms of cases dismissed, cases arbitrated, and cases fined. And five, over the past six years, are there any trends in the number of noise complaints, and the manner in which these have been handled? Thank you.
Thank you, David. David had sent that request in earlier, which I really very much appreciated, and staff, Jen Pifner, is working on it. David, you'll be getting an answer probably within the next few days, but thank you very much for that. Other folks want to come up and visit with us? Tell us what's on their mind? Going once, going twice. I see no one else rushing to the podium, so we will continue on. And number three is the appeal of 626 Kenneth Street variance decision. Before we go on to that, Becky, I want to make a disclosure. This was heard in November, November 21st, when I was on the Board of Adjustments, I was the chair of that, and I find it that if I'm in a position where I have to make a decision, it will not be any kind of a bias, bias, or any kind of a bias on it one way or the other, I'll listen to whatever comes up tonight. We will not be taking new testimony on this. This is strictly testimony from that hearing that we had, and that's what will be discussed amongst the council and the council's findings. So with that, Becky, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmen. Before you tonight is an appeal of a variance decision for a parcel at 626 Kenneth Street. This variance was denied by the Board of Adjustment on November 21st, 2013. And for everyone's understanding, I'd like to provide first a definition of a variance from the Idaho State Code. This is from Code Section 67-6516. A variance shall not be considered a right, but may be granted only upon a showing of undue hardship because of characteristics of the site, and that the variance is not in conflict with the public interest. The property owner proposed to divide a parcel at 626 Kenneth Street into two parcels, and requested a variance from the required minimum lot width for one of the resulting parcels. The subject property is located here, outlined in red. It's between, it's on the north side of Kenneth Street, between South Logan and Lynn Avenue. Here's just a closer look at the subject property. Before I get into the details of the application, I'd like to provide a couple code provisions and definitions that are relevant to the application. From Chapter Six of the zoning code, every lot shall abut a public street right-of-way for a minimum of forty feet. However, within each zone, a minimum lot width is defined that is specific to the type of the dwelling. And lot width is defined as the dimension of the lot line at the street, or in an irregular-shaped lot, the dimension across the lot at the building line, or in a corner lot, the narrow dimension of the lot at a street or building line. So for example, in the R3 zone, the minimum lot width requirement is sixty feet for single-family and two-family dwellings. And in the R1 zone, it's eighty feet. The example here on the right is a parcel within the R1 zone, and I wanted to provide an example of an irregular-shaped lot. These are typically found adjacent to cul-de-sacs. As you can see here, the parcel abuts the cul-de-sac at a width of fifty-three feet, so it meets that minimum forty-feet requirement that it needs to abut a public street. When the front yard setback is applied, it's twenty-five feet in the R1 zone. When that is applied, that establishes the building lot line, where the lot width is then measured on this type of a lot. And here it is measured at eighty feet, which is the minimum lot width for R1. Additionally, flag lots shall abut a public street right-of-way for a minimum distance of twenty feet. The flagpole portion of the lot shall not exceed one hundred and fifty feet in length, and shall not be less than twenty feet in width at any point. There is no maximum width specified for that flagpole portion of the lot. A flag lot is defined as a lot with access provided to the part of the lot designated for use as a building site by a narrow corridor. So here I have an example of a flag lot, and as you can see, the parcel abuts the public street at a width of twenty feet, and it remains at twenty feet until it reaches the building site in the rear. And that narrow corridor is at a length of ninety-four feet, which is less than the maximum one hundred and fifty. So once again, the subject property that we're reviewing tonight is at 626 Kenneth Street. It's located within the medium-density residential R3 zone. In the R3 zone, the minimum lot width for single-family and two-family dwellings is sixty feet, or fifty feet, for lots which are provided rear access from an alley. The subject property does not have alley access. This is a site plan that was submitted by the applicant. The subject property is one hundred and ten feet in width currently. The darker gray shaded area would create a new lot that would be in full compliance with the zoning code, and it would also include the existing home that is there now. The other lightly shaded area that, to the north and the west of the gray, would be the second parcel that would be created, and would have a minimum width of fifty feet along Kenneth Street, which is ten feet less than the required minimum of sixty feet. Here's just a photo of the site from Kenneth Street. The red home there is the existing house. The subject property is a one-half acre parcel, one hundred and ten feet in width. There are twenty-five lots on the Kenneth Street block. Three of them exceed a hundred feet in width, and one of those is the subject property. Fourteen of the lots are between fifty and fifty-six feet in width, which is less than the required minimum of sixty feet. And it's assumed that those were created prior to 1957, before the code was changed to require sixty feet. Land use in the area consists primarily of single-family homes, however, there are two lots that have two-family dwellings on them. This map denotes the land use in the area, and all, each of the twenty-five previously mentioned lots are shown here. The purple denotes single-family dwellings, and the blue is two-family dwellings. Vehicle access to the subject property is off of Kenneth Street. Kenneth Street is a thirty-foot-wide paved residential street with curb gutter and sidewalk along most of the street. There is a gap of sidewalk missing in front of the subject property and the parcel to the west. Relating this application to the comprehensive plan, Chapter Two, Community Character and Land Use, designates the subject property as Neighborhood Conservation. Neighborhood conservation areas are intended to preserve the character of existing residential neighborhoods. An objective of Chapter Two is to protect existing neighborhood identity and character by preventing unintended impacts to established neighborhoods when new areas are developed or zoning designations are modified. Here's just a few more photos of other residences located on Kenneth Street to give you an idea of the street character. On the hearing in November before the Board of Adjustment, the staff supported the proposal for the following reasons. The proposal was consistent with the comprehensive plan, in the idea that it preserved the neighborhood character. The creation of two parcels with a single-family dwelling near and facing the street would be consistent with the nearby lots. The proposal would result in public street improvements, including installation of a large portion of the sidewalk gap that is currently missing on the north side of Kenneth Street. However, the staff found it difficult for the application to achieve compliance with the relevant criteria and standards, specifically numbers one through four, that are required for the approval of a variance, and no further recommendation was provided to the board. On the, on the night of the hearing, there was no public testimony in favor or in opposition of the variance, other than the applicant's testimony. There was a significant amount of discussion among board members, staff, and the applicant regarding the allowance of multiple structures on a single parcel within the R3 zone. Multiple structures are allowed on a single parcel, as long as the minimum lot area per dwelling is met for the type of dwelling in question. So for example, a single-family dwelling requires a minimum lot area of six thousand square feet per dwelling. So if there's a twelve thousand square foot lot, that lot would be permitted to have two single-family homes. And then likewise with a two-family dwelling, one two-family dwelling requires seven thousand square feet, so a fourteen thousand square foot lot would be permitted to have two two-family dwellings. I point this out, but it's important to note that this topic and discussion is not relevant to the variance request and the application that was before the board. Now I'd just like to go through the relevant criteria and standards that are used to base the decision of approval or denial of a variance. Special conditions or circumstances must exist which are peculiar to the properties, such as size, shape, topography, or location, and which are not applicable to other properties similarly situated in the same zoning district. Because of the aforementioned special conditions and/or circumstances of the property, application of the provisions of the zoning code would impose undue hardship and deprive the property owner of rights commonly enjoyed by owners of other properties similarly situated in the same zoning district. The special conditions or circumstances of the property are not the result of the actions of the applicant or the property owner. Granting of the variance will not confer a special privilege to the subject property that has denied other similarly situated property in the same zoning district. And finally, granting of the variance is not in conflict with the public interest, or injurious to property or persons in the vicinity of the subject property. The Board of Adjustment, like I mentioned, has denied the decision based on the fact that they could not satisfy criteria numbers one through five. For number one, they found that no special conditions or circumstances existed about the lot. They concluded for number two, that the zoning ordinance did not impose undue hardship or deprive the owner of rights enjoyed by others. For number three, the fact that there was no special conditions found, they concluded that number three did not apply. Number four, they concluded that granting the variance would confer a special privilege by allowing the owner to create a lot that is smaller than other undeveloped lots. And finally, for number five, they determined that since granting the variance would provide a special privilege to the owner, that it would be in conflict with the public interest. The complete appellate statement is included in the packet before you tonight, however, I will give a summary. The appellate contends that the variance request is consistent with neighborhood preservation goals of the comprehensive plan, and that the issues and facts of the application were not considered by the board, and the rationale for the decision was not based upon the comprehensive plan, relevant ordinances and statutes, constitutional principles, or factual information. The appellate contends the term "similarly situated" is fluid, was not defined by the board, and the conclusions related to this term were made by comparing the subject lot to an unknown lot. And the appellate contends the relevant criterion standards for this application do not include explanation of the decision as required, nor were they drafted and approved as required by city code. The actions that may occur tonight, as stated in the zoning code, are as follows. When considering the merits of an appeal, no additional public testimony or information shall be taken or considered by the council. After considering the record and the reasons for the appeal, the council shall take one or more of the following actions. They may sustain the decision of the board in whole or in part. They may reverse the decision of the board in whole or in part. Or they may remand the decision, remand the matter in whole or in part to the Board of Adjustment with comments and/or instructions for further consideration by the board. The council shall remand an appeal in whole or in part for gathering of additional material information, and a decision and an accompanying reason statement based upon the original and the additional presented evidence where the appellate shows the council by a preponderance of the evidence that there is one of two things: new material information which was not available or readily discoverable at the time of the final decision, and that it is in the public interest to develop such additional material information on the matter. So with that, I am available for questions.
Thank you, Becky. Dan?
Becky, how come, and you, I might have missed it while you were going through it, but right next door, I would say probably two addresses west, or maybe it's east, west, I guess. No, it'd be two addresses east, that's a flag lot. Why wouldn't the proposal create a flag lot?
The applicant desires to build a dwelling along the street frontage. So if flag lot is defined as having that narrow corridor that leads to a building site, there wouldn't be allowed, development would not be allowed within that narrow corridor.
So just the definition of a flag lot is no development in the, I mean, if they said that they were only going to develop in the back half, you could have as wide a corridor coming forward as you want.
Right, there's no width specified, so, no maximum width specified, so...
But they wanted, they're talking about fronting closer, so, okay, thank you.
Tom, question?
I had a couple of definition questions, including this one about a flag lot. I mean, if we just thought of that as a flag lot, it's fifty feet, and a flag is minimum of twenty, fifty is bigger than twenty, therefore it works. But you're also saying that you're not allowed to build within that twenty?
That's right.
Within a flag lot? There's another rule that says that.
It's just, it comes from the definition of a flag lot.
So do we have a clear definition of flag lot?
This is exactly as stated in the code. It just says that it's a lot with access provided to the part of the lot designated for use as a building site. So the narrow corridor is not considered part of the building site, it leads to the building site.
It's not considered, but is it not allowed?
That's my understanding.
I mean, at fifty feet, if you had a flag lot that's eighty feet, would you allow it? I mean, would we allow it in there? So I guess I'm trying to really understand the definitions of this.
Bill hopping in here as well.
In order to maintain the integrity of a lot width standard, you really couldn't allow somebody to do a pseudo-flagpole lot that was less than the minimum lot width, and then allow them to build within that area. The intent of the code is flagpole lots are lots that have a narrow corridor that leads to the building site, and the building site is outside of that narrow corridor.
Okay, so my next question. I'm also stuck on the word irregular. The definition of an irregular lot was in the first slide, or maybe the second slide? I can't remember. And a regular-shaped lot, do we, what's a regular-shaped lot? I'm assuming that a regular is the opposite of regular, so do we have, do we know what a regular-shaped lot is?
I don't believe that the code defines an irregular-shaped lot, but it's, it's been interpreted as, as I described, kind of here, as lots that have an irregular shape. They may have five sides even, but they're commonly off of cul-de-sacs. They're not just a rectangular or a square.
Oh, not to be argumentative.
That's fine.
But that shape right there is on every one-dollar bill. It's the pyramid with the top cut off, so that's pretty regular. But I guess I'm just trying to figure out, when we're talking about this, do we, are we, are we saying that a lot should only be rectangular? When I look at the proposal, it's got a fifty-foot, that could potentially be, you know, thought of as a regular. A flagpole lot could be a regular, but then it's more closely defined as twenty. I'm just trying to understand the terminology, because I think that affects what we can and can't do.
Well, as we go along, Bill, did you have something you want to point out?
Just for the sake of clarity, even if you have an irregular lot, you need to meet the minimum lot width at the building line. So you'd need to meet the sixty feet in width, so even if you have...
And building line is...
It'd be where the building would be placed, or the minimum setback, generally when reviewing a plat and looking at a regular lot, we would look at the setback and ensure that they're meeting that at the, at the setback line. In this case, they wouldn't meet that building width at the minimum setback, they would only meet it, meet the lot width as you got back to the rear portion, again, kind of in the same as a flagpole configuration. That would, so that would establish or push the building site to the rear portion of the property, where it, as proposed, it would widen out and would meet the minimum sixty-foot width at the rear of the proposed new lot.
So if I'm trying to understand, if, if the building were being proposed at the rear part of the lot, that would be unacceptable.
They could just do a flagpole, it would just be a, we would consider it a flag lot if that was going to be the designated building site, and they could just go through a lot division approval. The applicant wished to retain the development opportunity up at the street line, at the same position as the other, other home, but they couldn't meet the minimum lot width up at that location.
John, did you have a question? Did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, yeah, I was, had at least one thing here, and it seems to me that with a flag lot, then you could put in a driveway to the back, and build something back there, and then you could sell all of it. It's just that the building would be further off the street than, say, the house that is on there now is, is that, is that...
That's correct. That would be permissible underneath the code to create a flag lot. It's that the applicant did not wish to develop it in that configuration.
Okay.
Walter?
Becky, in one of your slides, you're talking about twenty-five lots in the block or in the neighborhood. And then go to your purple and blue slide, please. Where are the twenty-five lots you're talking about?
So it's a little bit hard to see on there, but it's basically all the lots, these, these four here, and then all the ones that front Kenneth, and then, it's all the ones on the first block off of Kenneth, I guess.
So it's the two half, it's, it's the southern half of the block north of Kenneth, and the northern half of the block south of Kenneth?
Right.
Or the twenty-five you're counting? Okay, if I may?
Go, go ahead, continue.
And there's no problem, had the variance been approved by the Board of Adjustment, or if it were to get approved by this group, there's no problem building in that fifty-foot space up closer to the street?
That's correct, as long as they meet all setbacks. They'd have to meet the side setbacks.
Right, but it's, but it's physically possible to do that. And then if I may, the third one is, you said something about sidewalks are not in that block in front of this particular current house, or the lot to the west, and if this were approved, sidewalks would be occurred on the, on both of the two new lots created?
So that's something that engineering would review, but typically with this type of improvement, there would be a requirement that street, the sidewalk be improved in front of that parcel.
And that would be both the fifty-foot lot and the sixty-foot lot?
I'll defer to Bill.
Bill?
Generally, it would only be required for the lot that it has, is having a new principal structure constructed. So if it was approved as proposed by the applicant, the fifty-foot wide lot would be required to make frontage improvements. The sixty, the existing home and existing lot would not be required to unless the council made that a condition of approval of a lot division request.
Okay, thank you.
So if the lot is considered in its entirety, and the building site was pushed to the back, it could in fact accommodate more than one two-family dwelling?
That's correct.
So, so in other words, if you just ran a driveway up, there'd be sufficient room in the back for a couple of...
Yes, they, if, if this was approved, the lighter shaded area is just, just over fourteen thousand square feet, which would allow for two, two-family dwellings.
John?
I'm sorry, I got another one here. Reading through this, and then seeing it on the screen, we were talking, or we heard about nineteen fifty-seven, and when the current sixty-foot footprint was required. Does that have anything to do with what happened before nineteen fifty-seven, other than they changed it?
Asking me?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I would say that it's just that they changed it, they decided to change the characteristics that are allowed in there, changed it to sixty, for whatever reason they did.
So from nineteen fifty-seven till now, the lot has been one hundred and ten feet wide, and that was fine. And now, the owner wants to break it apart into a sixty and a fifty, and is using the nineteen and pre-nineteen fifty-seven rules to justify the move?
Walter?
Um, Bill had...
All I was going to say is, I don't want to speak on behalf of the applicant.
We're going to give the applicant a chance.
They have requested a variance from the minimum lot width.
One of the things, even though this is in a public hearing, we're going to give the applicant a chance, as soon as we're done questioning Becky up here, we're going to give her a chance to talk about this, John. So even though it's not a public hearing, she'll get her opportunity. Let's go to Wayne first, Walter, and then I'll come back to you. Wayne hasn't spoke yet.
Total size of the newly-created lot would be fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
That's right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
If you do the math... If you do the math, 50 feet times 144 feet, that first, the narrower section is 7,200 square feet, which would then leave you 7,400 square feet in the larger section. The larger section being 7,400 square feet, could you in fact put two duplexes in there or two townhouses in there? Because it is 7,200 square feet?
7,200 square feet would only allow for one duplex.
No, but the lot as a whole is still 14,000.
Would allow for two total.
Hang on, Bill, you wanna help out?
Just to clarify, you know, that's really not the question that's before the, the council. The council is being requested to approve a lot, or being asked to review the decision of the board related to a variance request for the lot width. What they may or may not be able to do underneath the code is what they may or may not be able to do underneath the code or physically on the individual site. We do require underneath the code, in the R3 district, to have a 7,000 square feet per two-family dwelling. That would meet the 14,000 legit, you know, how you would physically fit it on the site, I don't really want to comment upon. That's, that would be something that, that would be viewed at a future date.
I think, we'll move on, Becky. I'm gonna have Kit come up now, she wants to, Kit, you know, I seen you out here, you wanna come up and address the council, please? Like I said, there won't be any new testimony, folks, but we're gonna want the applicant to speak on some of these, maybe some of the questions that the council has up here she can answer.
Okay, Catherine Kit Crane, 626 Kenneth. I'm here as trustee for the Janet H. Crane Trust and as personal representative for the estate of Janet Haglin Crane. The trust actually owns this property. It's an estate property. I'm trying to get it sold so that I can settle the estate, and unfortunately, I can't sell it as one piece. The economy just, you know, people can borrow money to buy it, but they can't borrow money to do anything with it once they've got it. So, my basic point in asking for this is so that we can try to create something that's in character with the neighborhood. I'm not gonna develop the lot. And it really doesn't matter whether we have 50 feet of width or a flag lot, we still have the same space to, for somebody to develop whatever. My, again, my concern is getting something to fit in there. I've lived there all my life, and I would hate to see two big duplexes way in the back and then a big empty space in the front. And a couple things, questions people had here, there is a sidewalk in front of the existing house. It's the new lot that, that does not have a sidewalk. And also, on the 60 feet, the 1957 ordinance, that 60 feet was specified for any development outside of the 1957 city boundaries. Inside, the 1933 50-foot width applied. Sometimes subsequent to that, that 60 feet was applied to the entire city, so. Basically, I asked for this because you do have in your comprehensive plan that neighborhood overlay passed in 2012. The city simply has not had time to develop all of the codes and procedures that you need to implement it. And a variance is about the only way I can see to be able to develop this in compliance with the comprehensive plan during that interim period where you don't have the code. And that's basically, that's basically it. I'd like to see that, my mother would have liked to see that, my neighbors would like to see that developed with something along street level. And if the flag lot, they would probably end up with two duplexes at the back of the lot. With this configuration, with the 50 feet, you would have one structure at the street level and another at the back, so there would be space for yards and other things. So it wouldn't look odd forever. That's all I have to say, unless you have questions.
Walter, do you have a question? Walter?
Yeah, Kit, and I don't take this as being argumentative, but I find your, your explanation a little confusing. Your interest is in settling the estate?
Yeah.
You stated. In order to do that, you need to sell this property, and you're-
Right.
-finding that you're, you have been unable to to this point.
Right.
If you just want to sell the property at, at, I'm presuming, a price you're willing to take for the estate and get that done, why not just do it as a flag lot and let whoever buys it do whatever they're gonna do? And then you don't have to go through this exercise continuing with us.
Um, it's very simple that I've got a really friendly neighbor next door that I like, and one on the other side, and people across the street, and just the whole idea of imposing a development way in the back just doesn't set right with me. And that's basically it.
No, fair enough, fair enough.
Walter, I wanna, one of the things here, and Bill alluded to it earlier, you know, we're gonna take the merits of the variance. We can't really tell the applicant what she could or could not do, or what's available, because we need to stay within finding the relevant criteria and making a decision on the variance. So it really doesn't have anything to do with what, I mean, even though we're in a-
The question was directly related to the applicant's statement.
But it was, it was one of those things that Bill had pointed out earlier, so I think we need to keep the confines in with the variance, why it was denied, and/or if we're gonna, which direction we're gonna go with this thing. And the five relevant criteria is all very well important. Thank you, Kit, very much.
Okay, thank you.
John, you had a-
Well, just a comment that I was reading over again, the relevant criteria and standards. Do all five of these have to be met?
Yes.
Okay, and if four of them are met and one isn't, it-
Bill, I'm gonna let you answer that. I know the answer to that, but I'm gonna let you answer that.
Yeah, during through a variance, you know, conformance with all of the five criteria have to be met.
All right. Well, this may be a bit premature, but at this point, reading this-
John, hang on a second, Dan had a question here, and then I'll come back to you, John.
You know, I wasn't on the Board of Adjustment at the time, but looking through, I could go through those relevant criteria and, and make it fit. I mean, I gotta look at the actual, can, can you put the, the five criteria back up on the board?
Make it fit.
I mean, yeah, I mean, the first one, I wanna make sure that I'm answering the right questions. The special conditions exist, in my opinion, because of the location of the property and the other, you know, we're talking about a, a development that was created in, you know, the early 1900s, and so that's, it's kind of a historical neighborhood, so that to me seems like a special condition. And it could create, you know, the, we're talking about the hardship in part two, because it deprives of making that into, say, you know, if it was 100-foot wide, you could make two 50-foot lots, like most of them are, it seemed to be in the neighborhood. Number three, the conditions of the property are not the result of the actions of the applicant or property owner, because the rules changed, the code changed, you know, they, they own the property, but they didn't make the code changes. And then number four, it doesn't confer a special privilege because it isn't different from 25 other lots in the area, as far as lot width. And number five, it's not in conflict with the public interest because, or injurious to the other property in the vicinity, because it's, would make it very similar to the other properties in the vicinity.
Okay, John, you had a-
Well, I was, I was just gonna say that when it comes time to the, to the vote, I'm gonna stick with the Board of Adjustment. I appreciate what Dan said, but as I'm reading this, I come to a different conclusion.
Okay. Go over in this side. Walter?
Um, I would have problems with this if we didn't have so many 50-foot and 53-foot wide lots all over the place. If there were, every lot out there was 60 and 100 and larger in size, and someone walked in here and wanted to cut this into a 50 and a 60, I'd say, I don't think so. It's, you know, it changes the neighborhood, and blah, 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 all those things. It is just creating something that you've already got there. The fact that the owner of this property, or, you know, over the years, has had the rules, or, you know, that apply to them changed without them either asking for it or wanting it, or realizing it would create a problem down the road, I just, I don't see that that has anything to do with them. I was having a problem, John, with trying to understand how to go through one through five and, and make them fit, because I've, I don't know, maybe I'm not the only one up here who's got that O P and Z experience, but I certainly don't. But Dan just explained to me how it can be done. So I would make a motion that we reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment. That's in hold.
I second that.
Okay, Walter made a motion to reverse the decision, seconded by Tom Lamar. Other discussion, Wayne?
It would be nice if we could, you could go back to the various years where they changed the zoning code, and they changed the frontage requirements. And even if they, if they realized that the hardships that they would be creating, where they already had lots that were 50 feet, and then changing it to a requirement of 60 feet. This isn't the first time that I've seen this with other instances of folks that have had property for a long time and wanted to do some changes to it, but because the code has changed, it has inhibited the progress and inhibited the ability of them to affect the changes to the property that they really wanted to. As Walter said, if we didn't already have 50-foot lots in this, in this particular subdivision, I would probably have a greater concern about reversing the Board of Adjustment's decision. But I think that the city did create a hardship in that particular development by changing the code and creating a 60-foot frontage requirement from the original 50-foot, of which these were originally platted at. So, when I first was looking at this, I was, I was really going to, I really felt like I was going to have to stick with the Board of Adjustment. But through the conversation and discussions that we're, we're having, I have to agree with Walter and Dan.
Art? Yeah, I think Dan did a good job of describing how the criteria and standards could be looked at from a different perspective and explain away. But I would like to, maybe, someone, Bill, maybe, to comment on number four, as to whether granting this variance will confer special privilege to the subject property that is denied to other similarly situated properties. Does that mean that by granting or reversing the ruling of the Board of Adjustment, that anybody with a property that was, say, 100 feet or more, could then subdivide theirs into 50-foot chunks without any further impediment because of the result of this decision?
If I might, that is always the risk of a variance, in that you don't want to grant variances that set additional precedence points that then undermine the application of the code from here on forward. When you're looking at similarly situated properties, you're not talking about just this individual neighborhood, but you're talking about other residential properties in the R3 district across the city as a whole. And if you're granting an individual property owner the right to have a lesser standard than any other property in town, then that is really generally granting them a privilege that nobody else has the benefit from. There may be pre-existing lots that were approved at the time that there was a different standard, so in this neighborhood, you see a large number of them. But they were legally permissible at the time they were issued. They, they received that entitlement at the time that they were developed or platted, and they are existing, you know, legal non-conforming lots of record and that they don't meet the lot width, but they were essentially grandfathered in for, lack of a better term. So, you really do need to look carefully at variances. They're intended to really be a release when strict application of the zoning code standards would almost constitute a regulatory takings where somebody's being denied, you know, a reasonable use that everybody else in the same zoning district can have, but there are some very special conditions about this property that denies them that, that opportunity. In this, you know, case, that may or may not be the instance. And I think as staff, we looked at the request, we felt generally that there are some good aspects of what was being requested as far as neighborhood compatibility in that area, but in looking at the criteria, we had a difficult time justifying that this was not, one, what was the hardship? Two, how is this not, not granting or conferring a special privilege? And three, how is this not the, you know, this request or the request to divide the property in this fashion was being requested by the applicant and was, you know, the result of their actions? Now, there certainly are other circumstances, and the council is, is a body here to review this decision and ultimately make that decision, but those are the items that I think as staff interviewing against their criteria, we did struggle with, but this certainly is before the council receiving.
Dan?
Yeah, I think that, you know, I'm in, I'm in favor of the motion, and I think that the, the applicant making the, where the current structure is a 60-foot wide lot, they're, they're in spirit adhering to the current code, but, you know, you can only do so much with what you have, that's not gonna grow another 10 feet in any way, so I think that, you know, they're, they're doing what they can with what they have, and at least making half the, the proposal fit the current code, while the other half, I guess would say, you know, for lack of a better, it's grandfathered. It's, it meets this, the same standard as the other lots in the area.
That brings up an interesting question about grandfathering. How does that affect this, Bill? I just wanna bring it up.
So, our technical term would be illegal non-conforming use or non-conforming lot of record. In this case, the property does not have that, that status, because it is fully conforming with its 110 feet of lot frontage.
So there is no grandfathering?
So, so there is no application of that concept to this, this property. What the requesting to do is to request a variance to allow something that would be less than the minimum code standard, and so that's, that's the request before the body is even.
Tom?
Well, behind my making of the, second of the motion and, and supporting of the motion itself is, you know, right next door, there are two 50-foot lots. I feel, I would feel fine if the configuration of the proposal was for a 50-foot lot that went all the way to the back. I, I don't feel like it needs to be, you know, a, an odd shape or an irregular shape that creates that sort of flag look. I'm, I'm happy with the development on a 50-foot lot right in that neighborhood closer to the street. I, I'm quite familiar with that neighborhood, I've gone up and down that street many times over the last few decades. And to me, it, it, it feels like it would be maintaining that neighborhood, the integrity of that particular neighborhood by allowing that to take place.
John?
I don't know how you could say that it's gonna continue with the feeling of the neighborhood when you have no idea what's gonna be put on there. Have not an idea in the world what's gonna be put on that, and it appears as though we are discussing a situation where the city council is helping somebody sell a lot under conditions that other people wouldn't like or wouldn't be able to sell a lot. And I have a problem with that. I can't, I think a lot could be sold under two or three other conditions that are perfectly within the rules right now, and the fact that in 1957, the city council decided to change the width of a lot from 50 to 60 feet. The lot was in there at 110 feet, it met all the criteria then. The lot still meets the criteria now, but if we change it and say you can cut off 50 feet, and we have no idea what's gonna go there, I don't see how, what is going to be keeping the neighborhood the way it is, I don't see how we can say that at all. I, I don't think we know that.
Walter?
I'm not sure that what's gonna go there is pertinent to the discussion. I'm getting an affirmative from the Development Director.
Bill, whatever is going to happen to the property is gonna be within the legal allowable uses underneath the zoning code. So, it's really about the various requests and this, this lot width, and are there special conditions that are you- conditions that are unique to this property? Are they placing a hardship upon the property owner that, that needs relief through the variance action? And is there a special privilege being granted to reduce the lot width standard? That's really the, those are the relevant, as well as the rest of the criteria.
Yep. Walt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd call the question.
Okay, we'll start to roll with Art.
Much as I'd like to, I'm hung up on number four, so I say no.
Aye.
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 Aye. No.
Okay, it passes four to two, the variance is overturned. So we win, folks.
Your Honor, was that a vote to call the question? Because you have to vote on that first prior to actually voting on the motion that was on the floor.
Okay.
Good man. Yes.
Okay, so now we will vote on the motion.
Good catch.
We passed it one way or the other, we passed it.
I would recommend actually going back, voting with a clear understanding of what you're voting on so that it's clear for the record. So if you go back and vote on the, vote to call the question.
Okay, Walter called the question. Does that need to be seconded by somebody? It doesn't.
No.
Okay, right. So we're going to start with John. This is the motion on Walter's calling for the question.
Aye.
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 Okay, now, you want us to have another re-vote on this?
Vote, vote on the original motion as well.
We're vote on the original motion. One of the interesting things is about half the time we really follow Robert's rules and half the time we don't. So this is one of those instances where we're going. So we'll start with Art.
Nope.
Aye.
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 Aye. No.
Okay, still four to two and the variance is kicked out and we'll move on to item number four.
Your Honor, if you'd like to instruct staff, we will need to draft a new reason statement to record the decision. Staff can prepare that and bring that back for the council's review at your upcoming meeting.
Yeah, and you're going to get those notes from Dan because he's the one that changed the criteria on it. So it'll be Dan Karskellian's, change of criteria.
So staff can draft the reason statement with reflecting the discussion that Councilor Karskellian provided and we will bring that board back for the council's review and approval at the March 3rd council meeting.
Okay. All right. Wayne?
I'd just like to make a comment that it's, very rarely will I vote against the commission's recommendations. And this is a very difficult one for me to vote on too. And had these lots not originally been 50 feet, I couldn't have gone for it, but.
Okay, well, we're going to move on to number four, which is the Moscow Human Rights Commission Chief David Duke will present to us.
Good evening. The Moscow Human Rights Commission submitted a letter to Mayor Lambert and the council back on February 6th. It recommended a letter of opposition be sent to our state legislators opposing two House bills, House Bill 426 and 427. These bills is presented and if approved would have a negative impact on our current non-discrimination ordinance found in Chapter 19, Title 10. And for your convenience, that letter was included in your packet tonight. This was brought before the Administrative Committee last Monday, February 10th. In that discussion, the committee members were in support, but they also requested that staff drafted a letter for consideration, narrowing the scope down of what was presented. Acting City Supervisor Bill Bynum drafted that letter and that letter is before you now for review. In the letter, it includes three main points which oppose House Bill 426 and 427. The first is it's an infringement on the rights of the cities to ensure all our citizens are protected from discrimination. The second point is the negative economic impact these bills would have if they are passed. And thirdly, there's no real need for these bills because a citizen's religious rights are already protected within the State of Idaho Constitution. Chairman Fonce can be here tonight because of a conflict, but I would be open to questions if you have any at this time.
Well, we have kind of interesting, some developments have happened the last few days. I'm going to let Bill, some of the things that we have seen come down where this has not gone on anywhere. Bill, you want to kind of explain what we've heard, where we're at with these, with 426 and 427?
Sure. The, Your Honor, the current status on House Bill 426, it was introduced, read the first time and referred to printing on January 28th. It was reported as being printed and referred to State Affairs on January 29th. It has not been posted to an agenda, it has not been discussed by the House State Affairs Committee as of this time. And general indications or communications in the Association of Idaho Cities indicates that they don't really expect it to be taken up by the State Affairs Committee. House Bill 427 was also introduced, read and printed on January 28th. It was reported out as printed and referred to the House State Affairs Committee on January 29th. The House Affairs Committee considered it on February 5th and there was a substantial amount of testimony in opposition to the bill and it was voted. There was a motion to move it forward on general orders for some potential amendments and modifications. There was a substitute amendment to hold it in committee. The substitute motion failed and the committee voted five to 11, 11 to five to send it on to the full House under general orders or in demanding orders. That's where it sits. It was referred to the House again on February 6th, on the action of the 5th, reported out on the 6th. It has been on the 12th order business of the full House on general orders for at least the last week. I've seen it appear on the agenda, has not yet been taken up by the House. And again, the indications from the Association of Idaho Cities is they expect it to possibly die on general orders and not be brought up under discussion in the full House. But there, that's no guarantee. But the general sense is 426 is still in State Affairs, been referred to them, but has not been placed on any agenda for consideration or discussion in the last over two weeks, almost three weeks now. And 427's been for the House under general orders for the last two weeks and has not been brought forward for conversation among the full House.
Bill, how long does the legislative session stay in before it ends?
Generally, it's about through the end of March is usually when they conclude.
So we've got roughly five weeks to go.
I don't know at this point in time what their schedule looks like this session.
Idaho Legislature does not have a drop dead date. They've been in, in session as late as May when they get hung up for one reason or another, but they're, my understanding and belief and their practice is that everyone's looking toward the end of March to get out of town if they can.
Okay. Tom?
I just got a, an email from a legislator who said that it was being brought back to committee tomorrow for a redo. Who knows how successful that will be, but apparently it's still being considered and apparently according to that legislator, not dead yet. It's not dead yet.
Tom, could you clarify what bill that was?
That was 427, I'm sorry.
427 is going to be considered by the full House?
No, by the committee.
It was referred out of committee to the House.
Right, and then it was, it's being brought back by Luker back to the committee, apparently.
I think.
After, right.
We'll certainly research that.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Walter?
Tom, in, in response to your comments, a 4:59 PM Statesman article says that Luker just announced that he plans to pull his Bill 427 and ask that it be returned to committee. That's the latest I see in here. There's nothing that says it's going back to committee. Whether or not it goes is subject to who knows what. It may, it may not.
Yeah, my, and my, my response was from, or my comment was from a, a message from Representative Sutu said that Tom Lorcher, I guess is the chair of that committee, sending it, willing to bring it up. So, I don't know. So anyway, it's still.
Floating around.
Still doing something. Still banging around.
John?
Do we, we don't need to do anything with this as we speak, do we?
Well, it's on the agenda. We have.
No, no, when I say, but we can, well then, I would make a motion that we table this until further time when acting on it is more imperative than it is right now.
I'd like to see us approve the language of the letter and let it reside for the moment and keep it on the shelf should these bills make further progress towards the floor.
If that's a motion, I would second that.
Okay, so John made a motion to table this until further time. Walter seconded that motion to table it? Okay. Bill, you had something, you act like you want to.
Just clarifies, we have a motion to table it and a second for the motion to table. And then Art also made a suggestion. So I just wanted to clarify that.
He made a suggestion, so the motion is to table. Dan?
Well, I would amend it then to, as Art said, approve the language. I think that when it's, if it's going back and forth, if they're going back and forth between committees and if possibly 426 is dead, I mean, there are, there's blanks that may need to be in there rather than, than have actual numbers in there, you know, opposition to blank, you know, and it might not be two measures, it might only be one. So I would, I would move to amend that motion to approve the language minus reference to whatever.
Exact number of the bill.
The exact bill number, yeah.
And then.
Okay, hang on. Walter?
Staff has some comment.
Your Honor, I don't think a motion to table is open for amendment.
Okay. Yeah. If not, if that's the case, then. Okay, so it's not debatable. We're going to, we're going to vote on this motion to table it.
And you need a majority to do it.
And we need a majority and there's no discussion, all right? Okay, we'll start with Art.
Mr. Mayor?
Nope.
No?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No. Aye.
So what do we have? How many do we have?
Three, three.
That's a tie vote.
Tie votes, three, three, and I say no.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Is it tabled or not?
Your Honor?
No, it's, yes.
Could we clarify that? I thought I heard Stephanie say it was three, three.
And the mayor voted no.
So the motion failed, so it's still under discussion.
So what I'd like to do is, what I'd like to do is make the motion that.
You can clarify that, Mayor.
I made a mistake on that. I voted two, I meant to be in favor of the motion to table it.
To table it?
Yep, to table it. So it should have been a yes vote, not a no vote. Verify that.
If, so the motion fails, you have somebody.
Sorry, folks, I threw a little kink in the wrench here, a wrench in the wheel of the spokes here.
Just clarify. Okay. I think just the clarification that you intended to vote yes for the motion to table will suffice. So we'll correct the record on the vote than it would, the motion to table would pass on a four to three margin.
Okay. So that motion is tabled.
So can I ask a question about process?
Sure.
I, what I was hoping we would do tonight, it was to approve the language with the authorization that the mayor keeps it in his back pocket until needed. If this comes up as it, tomorrow, as I think it probably will, and proceed perhaps even the next day to the full floor of the House, how would we be able to respond if we don't have approved language? Or would we be able to figure out a process so that we can authorize the mayor to send a letter?
With the matter tabled, it's tabled until the next council meeting, so you'd actually have to schedule a special council meeting to convene, to remove it from the table and to take action on it, or wait until the March 3rd council meeting. With it tabled, there's really no additional action the council can take until it is brought off the table during a council meeting and addressed at that time.
If we run into that, if we run into a specific situation like that, we could have a spe, a special meeting. How much notice do we have to have for that, Bill?
It's only 48 hours.
Forty-eight hours, okay. Stay tuned because that's where we're headed. I'm going to move on to the next thing in this report, we're done talking about this. Let's talk about reports. I will let you start off, Tom, administrative.
We handled the two items this evening, so I don't have anything more on administrative to talk about.
Okay. Walter, Public Works and Finance?
Nothing hanging far there.
Okay. We'll start with you, Art.
Paradise Path Task Force is making progress on a lot of fronts. They'll be here at the March 3rd meeting to present their latest activities, of which there are many. I'm happy to say they're moving forward nicely, have passed their mission statement through Parks and Rec, and that's heading our way for final approval as well. Sustainable Environment Commission met at the exact same time that we did tonight due to the holiday scheduling, so I have nothing to report from them.
Wayne, Mr. Wayne?
Well, the Farmers Market Commission met and that was part of the consent agenda, so we pretty well covered that. It had to do with getting out the notices to the vendors and also the appealing process in any particular violations that might happen. Loose Knowledge Corner continues to move forward with their Be An Entrepreneur Bootcamp that they plan on putting on in June. And today, Smart Transit had their monthly meeting and Smart's in pretty good shape right now financially. Our new executive director, Jenny Ford, has done a good job keeping expenses down. And we continue to be pushed, however, by the DCC, which is the, gosh, just, just District Coordinating Council. And they're the ones that actually make the decisions as to how in our District 2, 5311 federal funds are being distributed. The DCC continues to push Smart Transit to go to a fair charging system. In other words, start charging fares for riding on Smart Transit. Board of Directors for Smart continues to speak against that concept. All the studies that they've done shows that when you do institute that, that you lose up to a third of your ridership when that happens. And it costs about a dollar to a dollar and 25 per ride to break even just with the collection expense. And when we take a look at the amount of money that the City of Ma... (music playing). We look at that money as in lieu of ridership fees. So we will continue to argue that point. And the next DCC meeting will be in April and I will be attending that along with Jenny Ford.
Okay. Dan?
Well, on the 4th, the Tree Commission met, one of the big things that's coming out of there is everybody hopefully saw Nils Peterson's editorial, guest editorial in the paper regarding the Adopt a Tree program. So if folks could go ahead and pay attention to that and look on the city website, you can see how that works. Then on the 11th, we met with the 1912 Center Development Committee and they have the, basically, it'd be nice if somebody just donated $3 million to the 1912 Center and everything would be done on it. They came up with the, you know, basically got an estimate for what it would cost to entirely renovate everything and have it done and ready to, ready to go. But of course, things are blocked out into little chunks as far as, as getting things done, a little, little smaller chunks at a time anyway, as far as dollars. And then also on the 11th, the Arts Commission met, you know, basically discussed art walk and there's some, a lot of talk about possibly, I think I mentioned last time too, they're working on a policy hopefully to bring to the council on getting a poet laureate for the city. And you should be getting an application for a high school representative pretty soon. I, I kind of know her for at least the last 15 years, so, almost 16 years now, so.
Is there a recommendation?
I would recommend her approval if you, if you'd go ahead and do that. And then on the 13th, the Transportation Commission met and there was a lot of talk that we, and it had a lot to do with what we talked about in Public Works Finance a little while back, about vegetation management and site triangles. So that's, there was some, some discussion about whether some of those site triangles need to be as big in certain resident, slower, slower traffic residential areas as, as they are in, in other areas, so. other areas, so that's, that's going to be an interesting conversation as they have. And then, future topics, of course, they're going to continue to talk about bikes on Main Street and trying to keep them off the sidewalks downtown, so, and that's all I've got.
John?
Yeah, I went to the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, 7 o'clock on February 12th, and among the general discussion, we got a legacy crossing update which included the EPA assessment and the brownfield cleanup alternatives for the section on Jackson where the, some chemicals were used to keep the weeds down when the trains came in to have the boxcars loaded. Apparently, that is not going to be nearly as bad as was originally thought. It's moving along. Actually, I guess the biggest expense is getting the contaminated soil, which we only have to go about six inches up to Spokane because they've got a unapproved dump up there that can deal with them. And then, we talked a little bit about the market absorption study, which is, and the strategy and the Urban Renewal Agency. If the city and the university will co-op with the cost, the Urban Renewal Agency, as has been previously stated, will throw 5,000 into that study. And then, that evening, went to the planning and zoning, was a half hour late because I knew they were going to change the meeting time, but I didn't know that they did, but they did. Anyway, there was some discussion there about the accessory dwelling unit survey and the reports, and then the comments made by the, by the public, and a, another name for the accessory dwelling unit is a mother-in-law apartment, and that is something that is going to be taken up in more detail and depth. The number of recipients or responses to the survey, I thought, were really quite low, which is too bad. I would like to have had more people show more of an interest, one way or the other. They didn't. And then, the other thing that I found quite interesting, and we spent some time on, or they spent some time on, was the North Main Street zoning review and the possibility of moving the downtown section all the way to E Street on North Main, and that was kicked around and discussed, and that, again, is something that the council is going to have a chance to deal with in the future, but we talked about the zoning that is there now, the type of things that are there now, the few houses that are there now that would not be allowed, and then the setbacks, really quite an interesting discussion, and other than that, I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. Well, last, last Monday and Tuesday, I accompanied some folks down to Boise meeting with our legislators, some of the Chamber of Commerce people, Gina Terusio, our city staff person, Jen Pifner, Earl Bennett, Paul Kimball, and we had talked to a bunch of different groups, Department of Commerce, we met with them and spoke to them, the Water Resources Department, we spoke to, kind of an interesting area on water and water throughout the entire state of Idaho and some of the really serious problems they have in southeastern state of Idaho and some of the watershed problems that they were having in those areas. One of the things that came out was kind of interesting, and Paul Kimball spoke about the water summits that we have up here, and we were commanded as a community for doing the work that we're doing from the head of the Water Resources Departments, and there's some interesting things that will, looks to me like will develop for us in 2015. We talked about reservoir, top service reservoirs and this type of thing, and so there's some things that are going to be coming down the pipeline, not this year, but next year, so that will be very, very interesting. We also met with Governor Otter as well as Lieutenant Governor Brad Little, and, but had some interesting conversations with both those guys, and we met with the Labor Department, the head of the Labor Department, Ken, I can't think of what his last name, Shararda, I think, if I pronounced that right, but anyway, he, it was an interesting take that he had on for labor for the State of Idaho and where the whole state was headed with labor, and that was an interesting conversation, but to make a long story short, I got a chance to meet a number of different people down in Boise that are very influential throughout our state, and they have ties to us up here in vandal land, so I was very happy to represent City of Moscow and part of the chamber as well, so, and that is all I have, folks.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, maybe a moment, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Art. We'll start with John.
Aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, folks.